I know how they're gonna take the chemicals out.
Yeah, there'll be some pre-treatment going on.
Okay, it is nine o'clock. I will call a meeting to order. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I'll make motion, the agenda's approved.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Uh, approved the minutes of the last meeting. Brett, Betty, if you'll read the minutes from the March twentieth.
Uh, Chairman Cluse called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse and Rasmussen with Helgabold present via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgabold to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Cluse presented the uh, the representation letter from Allers Cooney Law Firm and the ha- matter of hazardous liquid pipeline. Cluse would like for the citizens and landowners to be fairly represented with the Summit Carbon Solution Pipeline going through Wright County. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabold to approve hiring Allers Cooney Law Firm to represent Wright County in the matters as discussed in their letter, and have the chairman sign. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabold to approve the farm tenant uh, to approve the farm tenant Troy Watney on the county farm to work with the NRCS and FSA office concerning construction of waterways on the county farm. Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen will be ta- tabled until the amended twenty-eight agreement is filed with Secretary of State. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabold to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Isaac Walton, Wright County Conservation Board and Humboldt County Conservation Board. This will allow Isaac Walton to take over the care and maintenance around the clubhouse, trap, range, and shelter house. This will also allow them to put up controlled access on the property. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads. There are twenty-seven work orders completed last week. Of the work orders, twenty-one of them were fabrication on the Sander Auger shut-offs on the dump trucks. Cluse are continuing to work on spot loads maps for the spring. Brian Johnson, EMS Director, discussed the special election to be held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. A resolution declaring EMS as an essential service in Wright County will be held in three readings. May thirtieth, June fifth, and June twelfth. Jensen- Jensen will publish the notice of the readings in the newspaper, March twenty-ninth. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgabold to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
And so the only uh, correction I would have was uh, concerning the twenty-eight E agreement, we had a motion and a second, but doesn't show any action.
Yeah, okay.
It's heard that was approved.
Yep. But it, thank you.
Is there any other additions or corrections? There are none. They'll stand approved as corrected. Uh, claims for payment that went around. And then signed, uh, open forum to public input. Bob, you were the first one here. Did you have anything for us?
Not really.
Okay. Uh, Sam.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on, there's been some postcards sent out by a uh, company that has made the statement that there's arsenic found in wells in Wright County. Uh, I believe Franklin County got the same similar postcards. Um, and there is a cost for them to test for arsenic. Um, that would also, that'd be a personal choice if they want to choose to do that, that's fine. But we do have grants to counties that, um, I write that grant every year and I'm a- and am able to test well water free. I can do that every year for the same well. Um, it is education to the homeowner only. There's no, you know, uh, regulations that that the county or environmental health or public health can go in and say, you must do this with your well. It's more of you now have knowledge on what your well. Um, arsenic over probably in two thousand and oh, eighteen, can't remember the date. We did get them to allow arsenic testing in the wells also. Um, in the normal or safe drinking according to um, CDC EPA is under ten parts per billion. What I see in my testing is there are some wells that are above ten parts per billion. Some, and I try to test raw water when I do that. So if it's just barely above it, a lot of times your softening system are digging out those metals. Cause arsenic is a metal. We'll bring it down into a safe drinking level. When it gets a little higher, that doesn't work. There are some that will, would require if the homeowner chooses to have like a reverse osmosis. But I'm not seeing any huge um, highs. They're usually ranging between ten and twenty. Um, and it's all, all pretty workable. I just don't want people to go into a panic that cause it was just kind of a blanket statement that says we're finding arsenic in in uh, wells in Wright County and Franklin County. It is a natural subst- or a natural metal. So don't want anybody to panic, but it can be tested. I'll continue to send my postcard that I send every year as a re- reminder to homeowners or well owners that you can have it tested free.
And you send them samples off to a licensed lab?
I send them all to the state hygienic lab. Um, the, the timing of it is a little difficult because I, I've been doing them on Sundays or Mondays for, because when, when you do the bacteria, it has to start cooking. Um, it has to reach the lab within forty-eight hours. So Sundays and Mondays, getting a courier to pick it up by Tuesday is about the latest I'd like to have that go out because by Thursday morning, because it's tested two days later, they need it on their shelf started by Thursday morning.
Cause I know the city does that too. They have uh, certain locations and they change it up all the time. And then they have to get them like you do to a lab by a certain time.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise it times out and I have to start all over.
Yeah.
Good. So, so uh, for the public's information, that service is offered free
Yes.
through the county. Uh, it's paid for by grants that we
Grants to county and
re- receive.
Yeah, and he was board supervisors.
Yeah.
I can only bill it every three months. So you guys are kind enough to, to pay those bills up until that point and then it's reimbursed back.
Right.
So we do the well testing. We can plug wells. Um, we now are able to disinfect a well. If we feel like any shocking or disinfected, we can go up to three hundred dollars on that.
Correct.
We can do well reconstruction where you bring the wellhead above um, ground out of a pit.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mitch. And you notify the?
Yes, I send out their results and if there's anything that's um, that's of a concern, I send a book and reference the page in it and they're always welcome to call.
Cause I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah. Yeah.
Every year I get a postcard from the Wright County Cemetery that says, you know, pretty well inspecting. And if you call and then she comes out and takes a sample, pretty soon you get a report from the state lab.
Yeah.
I didn't remember the report, but
Yeah, they, they send it to me and then I may allow. Yeah. And then I may allow the report to get into.
Mine test twenty-five, Robert. Mine caught there in major test twenty-five parts per billion.
Well, you're special. Okay, any, anyone else for uh, public forum? Okay, item number six, receiving and file jail inspection letter. This is a letter dated March seventeenth. Um, it is concerning the Wright County Jail Inspection, uh, addressed to myself, the chairman. Wright County Jail was inspected March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three by the Iowa Department of Corrections as required by Iowa Code, section three fifty-six to ensure compliance with chapters two oh one through uh, two fifty of the Iowa Administrative Code. The inspection included an examination of staff training records, required documentation, and prisoner files. Wright County is in compliance with chapter fifty Iowa, Iowa jail standards. Documentation appears to be complete and was readily available for inspection. Wright County Jail is clean, well managed, and well maintained facility. I wish to express my appreciation to Chief Deputy Jail Administrator Jeremy Holgrave, uh, jail supervisor Sheila Cordova, and the entire staff of the Wright County Jail for their assistance and cooperation during the inspection. And it's signed by uh, Chief Jail Inspector, uh, Delbert Langley. So I'd like to place that on the five. All right. Hey. Uh, good morning. Uh. Item number seven, hold the first reading ordinance number sixty-five on tanning belt facility inspections.
Prior to, well, just before COVID, we always, um, the county had a twenty-eight E agreement with Iowa Department of Public Health to do those standing bed and any visibility inspections. They, we no longer have a twenty-eight E across the state. They continue to, the license and certify. Uh, but it's up the count, up to the county to have that ordinance in place to do the inspection. So we, we follow still the Iowa code.
Correct.
Um, the Iowa code is still in place on what the minimum standards are, so.
And no changes to the ordinance?
No.
Good. I need action on that.
Um, your Board of Health approved this on Thursday?
Approved it on Tuesday. Um, that ordinance, it's up to, uh, up to you guys now as being your
Three reading.
Three readings, okay. But I don't need to take action on the reading. I mean, consider
Just say that you held the first reading
Okay.
of the ordinance.
Okay, so the
As, as approved through the Board of Health.
Good. Uh. I consider that we have held the first reading of ordinance number sixty-five on training facility inspections uh, as approved by the Board of Health.
Tanning.
Tanning, that's right.
Tanning, excuse me.
I could do train, do like someone.
Okay.
And Eric Simonson has gone through this also.
Okay, excellent.
Yes.
So we'll have that on the next two
Two weeks.
consecutive.
Mm-hmm.
Means, all right. Uh. Adam, can we fit you in there?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're skipping down to item number nine. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, Secondary Roads update.
Okay, last week, uh, the blades are, uh, were sent out on Monday to spot blade any trouble areas and any spot rock that they had out right now. Um, still a little uh, frozen conditions. Um, and then where it was warranted, they played in four miles if they could. Um, remove the snow equipment so they can feel a little bit less, you know, constricted in what they can do. Cause if they have that snow equipment on, they can't crab walk. They can't do anything like that without bending a, a hydraulic. Um. Calling the spring spot loads is still going on with the, with the trucks. Uh, work orders, they completed six of them. Uh, we did have a Dillsom winter weather operations going on last Thursday, unfortunately, so. Keeps coming around. Um, and then last week, our superintendent, Burton Sign Foreman and Shop Foreman uh, visited Iowa Central to uh, put out recruiting for mechanic, because we still have no, uh, we have not filled that position yet.
Okay, great. So they went over to the college?
They went over to the college, got in front of the uh, professor and the, and the students.
Excellent.
Have one or two good leads.
Really?
Had one of the students actually asked the professor uh, for uh, the shop foreman's contact info.
Excellent.
So we are planning to maybe try to go up to uh, Mason City at some point too.
Okay. Right.
Thought I
Uh, any trucks out on Sunday morning in the South Park?
I didn't hear of any.
Okay.
Didn't hear of any, Nate would have put it on
Okay.
the, the winter operation, so.
You're good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Uh. Item number eight. Uh. That's nine fifteen, Katrina Paradise with Snyder and Associates, uh, and uh, working with McClure Engineering to introduce their company and what they can do to assist Wright County in um, in our county inspector concerning the carbon summit solutions pipeline. Ready to up. When, when you scooch under that table, um, be careful because it'll take your knees out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I got some information here to share with you. Okay, each one has been a following year. That's the presentation in a
Okay. Thank you.
And going steady. There's a little extra.
And uh, Adam. For Dan, you, uh, are you guys gonna share? Is this something that we can share uh, with the public? We've loaded a ton of drive.
Yeah, that's
Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, if there's anybody talking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's do it. Sharing right now and then uh, Maybe I'll see what the B F. There.
That's it.
Okay, so you're in share mode.
We gotta do it.
I'll make sure that you are. Page. There you go.
Oh, that's
So you guys, it's just scroll down and then go to the next page.
Okay. So, you know, I'll try to do it in my, that might be the bad one here.
So my name is Christina Paradise and I'm the senior construction tech with Snyder and Associates. And I oversee construction projects that are administered out of our Fort Dodge office. And now with the, the department pipeline, that's I'm the project manager for that endeavor. Um, I've been with the firm for six years. Snyder and Associates is proud to be an advocate for the boards of supervisors, landowners, residents, and drainage districts of Iowa. We're dedicated to providing superior service and the best possible outcome for our counties. With me is Dan Weedmire, EE from McClure Engineering, and I believe you all know Dan.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's my understanding that Wright County has a long history with McClure. And in many of our counties, not many, but several of our counties, we are partnered with McClure. So with Cassuth and Webster County. So, so you'll be Um, so the presentation, let me back up a minute and just tell you about the, the everything in this presentation either came out of the instruction for county inspector manual published by the I U B or it came straight from chapter nine. And a copy of that is in your folders. So every bullet point that I talk to is either in here or in that instruction manual. Okay. Um. Some of the pre-construction activities that we will be doing is exchanging contact information with the pipeline and the construction contractor when they name him. Um, obtaining their execution plan and schedule of the construction activities. We've got a meeting coming up with that. Um, obtaining required documents from Summit Carbon, so they have to provide us with copies of the land agreements, alignment sheets, topsoil depth surveys, and separate agreements. Um, and then we have a master log that we're building in the Snyder office that has So the I U B recommends that the, the way our project folders are set up, for each county, there'll be a, a main folder and then within that, there'll be a file for each parcel. Then where all the inspection reports and all the photographs and everything related to that parcel will be located. For the drainage districts, it would be the same. We would keep them in the separate drainage district folders. So, so we're working on getting that set up because you can imagine, I mean, it's a lot.
You bet.
You know, there are a lot of parcels and I, I'm getting, coming to it, but Wright County has more more affected property than any other county.
That's true.
From the carbon, yeah. So all that's tied to the easements and um, we're also trying to collect and file the private tile maps. So the landowners have maps of their property that they can share with us. We certainly would like to have them. You know, we can file them and then we'll have them for use in the field to help, hopefully help mistiles.
Correct.
And then the next sheet, number four, is um, some of the responsibilities of a county inspector is to photograph and document pre-construction condition of the land. So we wanna, we wanna show what it looked like before. Before the pipeline comes through. I wanna know what it looks like. I wanna be able to open the file folder and say, this was not restored to the same condition, not to, not to the near, nearly to the same condition.
Correct.
Though we're close. Um.
Will that involve uh, like a drone flyover or?
It'll involve trips to the, just trips. No, we'll, we'll just be making trips and walking in.
Okay.
Yeah. And I imagine I'm gonna try to do that when they stake.
Correct.
Cause I'm gonna be there when we stake, when they start doing their staking and that's probably the time
Okay.
to do it. Um. We're gonna document compliance and non-compliances with, uh, with all the requirements of chapter nine thirteen and four seventy-nine V twenty. The approved agricultural mitigation plan. That's also known as a land restoration plan. It's the same thing. So you'll hear it referred to different ways, same document. And uh, separate agreements between the pipeline and the owner. Those separate agreements mean a lot. The disposition of the fences, the, you know, if you want a road restored, if you want the rotate, the temporary access road taken out, all that, that's critical. We, we need those separate agreements.
And these are supplements to the easement.
That's
At least the ones that I've seen that have been filed so far with the recorder's office.
That's correct.
Their public record. Um, if, if we've got those, will you start collecting those now or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I'd love to have now. Uh, Western County is sending us
Okay.
some too. So, yeah, we, I'd love to have.
Correct.
The, the earlier the better.
Correct.
Um. We will issue stop work orders as necessary pursuant to I U B guidelines when violations are identified. And if you go to the next page, there's a process. So the authority of enforcement to standards is pursuant to one ninety-nine, not AC nine thirteen, and section four seventy-nine thirty twenty. The land restoration plan and separate agreements. So if we just, when we determine there's a violation, the first thing we do is stop work and find the foreman. We talk to the foreman, we show him what we see, we hash it out. If he says, you know, get on the hoe and he's gonna fix whatever he screwed up, that's it. It ends there. It's corrected. If it's corrected to our satisfaction, no other activity is needed. There's no, we write it in our daily report, but it doesn't go any further.
Correct.
If they do not properly remediate the non-compliance, the next step is we provide them with a written notice um, to the pipeline and its contractor. And then we give them another, you know, the code doesn't say how long, but I, I would expect immediate action. I don't expect two days, three days. I expect it through quick, you know? And so if that, if they don't correct it after that period of time, then we come to see you. We come to the board of supervisors and you petition the I U B to um, impose civil penalties against the pipeline and the contract.
Okay.
I've got one county that is actually setting, setting the fines for, for the infractions. They're, they're publishing it. Here's what it's gonna cost you, you know?
So so I understand that process, but that doesn't fix what the initial problem was. So where's the?
They'll have to go back and fix it because work stops at that location until it's resolved.
Okay. All right.
You know, they may skip it. They may skip that area and come, you know, have to come back to it.
Got you.
But we stop them from working in that location.
Okay.
Christina doesn't take no for granted.
Okay.
Never heard it very much in my life. When I hear it, I don't like it.
She's gonna just tell me about a project and she wouldn't specify it initially on uh, where the contractor wasn't quite holding up his end of the deal and how she sent him, made sure that he was. And, and then finally I fi- I figured out what's the pro- what project it was like. Oh yeah, you got that fixed real quick.
I just, you know, I mean, when you start throwing the buck at them and hitting them in the pocketbook, it, it changes their attitude real quick.
Correct.
I'm not here to make friends.
Right.
I mean, it's just business. So, um, so here's just, the next page is our scope, inspection and reporting summary of scope. Some activities that will be monitored for compliance are staking and clearing of agricultural land. And I'm not, well, I guess I will read the subsections. So that's easement staking, tree and brush clearing and fencing. Um, with trees, there should be a disposition. There should be a separate agreement. If somebody has a grove of trees planted that's valuable that they've, they want to sell or there needs to be an agreement on that because otherwise pipeline is probably just gonna burn it or gonna call it away. Um. Fencing's the same way. Fencing, it, it says in, in code that fencing will be removed. Um, so if there's livestock present, they're supposed to put up a temporary fence that is adequate to contain the livestock, but you know, it, it, it's gonna have to contain it, you know? I mean, it's not just for us, not just a snow fence. Um, one ninety-nine, nine point five is restoration of agricultural lands. So that's, that section talks about survey, topsoil surveys, um, topsoil separation and replacement. So that's storage, segregation, stabilization, um, and then eventually putting it back. Um, backfill of water from open trenches. We talked a little bit about that today. Um, they're gonna have to have a plan. They're gonna have to have a plan because we know they're gonna encounter water.
And you can't just pump it out on the other land.
Not unless there's an agreement in place.
Right.
There's supposed to be an agreement in place in advance. So, and if there's not, just go there and act by damages and
And, and it seemed to me like in uh, I think it was an email that you had sent out or, or maybe you and Dan in combination, but that the uh, the stockpile stabilization of our topsoil, there wasn't a, a specified seeding or how you're gonna stabilize that.
That's right. There's no, there's, it just says seed.
Correct.
So it doesn't say seed with what? It doesn't say what certification the seed has to have. It doesn't
Correct.
specify for the um, tackifier or for the mulch, I think. Yeah, I mean, there's no specifics there. So my suggestion is the counties, you guys need to specify.
Okay.
To tell us what, that should be in your agreement with pipelines.
Okay.
So it's very clear to them and to us what you expect.
Correct.
I know some people have, you know, organic farms or whatever. They don't want some weed control guy out there spraying pesticide all over everything, you know? So
Okay.
Yep.
So is that on the farmer's land or is that in the, like the roads, road ditches?
It could be, it, it's everywhere.
Okay.
So it's you, you, you can specify with the county.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that we can uphold it.
Correct.
Um, I don't think it should make a hill of things to the, to the pipeline, just as long as they know what to use.
Right.
They'll get it.
Right.
You know, um, they gotta use something to stabilize, so.
Correct.
If it was a hotly contested issue, I would say, I don't know, it might be up to the landowners. But I don't think this is gonna be a hobby a fight on that.
Right, okay.
We just need to tell them.
Yeah.
Um, so then temporary and permanent repair of drain pile. Um, that's also, that includes the clearance between the tile and the pipeline. The temporary repairs, screening, marking the repairs, then coming back and making permanent repairs and backfilling. Uh, we understand the importance of backfill all around the players. It's gotta be supported. There has to be some structure there so it doesn't sag and break again. Um, removal of rocks and debris from easement. Um, this includes removal and disposal. And again, the, the code is pretty specific about, about that, three inches in size and it, it's pretty specific.
Correct.
Restoration of soil compaction and rutting. The restoration of terraces, waterways, and other erosion control structures. Revegetation of untilled land. That includes crop production, delayed crop production, and weed control. And yeah, so you see my note
Yeah, yeah.
that there's no specifics. And restoration of land slope and contour. Restoration of areas used for field entrances or temporary roads and construction in wet conditions. Everybody wants to talk about construction in wet conditions. So are you guys participating with the I H U on that study?
Yes, ma'am.
Good deal.
Yeah.
So from that Good deal. So from that, we should, you know, it should be very, very clear. Me, you know, it's, it's muddy where you. You're sinking, you're not gonna be out, you shouldn't be out there.
When I read chapter nine, though, it seems to me that the rule is written. To understand that, but there's a way I would round it, bring in matting and I put the matting down and now that sinks. Sixteen inches into the mud and you replace it with more matting and now I have a service I can drive on foot.
They strip that topsoil, then they can mat it and they can drive on it. But what, you know, I think the question is still how it is too wet and can we shut them down for that? And then the next two sections is project completion. Oh, I skipped separate agreements. So a copy of all the separate agreements will be provided by, it's supposed to be provided by the pipeline. We'd rather make sure we have them all, so if the county has them, we'd love to have them. Um those will be included in each inspector's work package. So when, when they're on that parcel, they've got the agreement in their hands, they know what it says, they can apply the rules to it. And then the next two are project completion and documents of mill. Summit's progress towards a permit. So the I U B has issued a tentative schedule for Summit's evidentiary hearing. Despite numerous objections, it's supposed to be held in the fall. If a permit is granted, construction could commence as early as February or March of twenty-four. They say they're gonna work in the winter. They say they're gonna construct in the winter, so. However, the ninety percent easement rule, I, I'm sure you guys are aware and following it too. It did pass the House and it's with the Senate. If it's approved by the Senate and the governor, it could affect Summit's ability to construct. So they would have to get ninety percent of, of it. It's worded. Ninety percent of the miles and not ninety percent of easements. It's ninety percent of miles.
And that would, it's miles?
Yeah.
No. I mean, that's what I read. You read the same thing, Danny?
And it, and that's in the state of Iowa?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So um according to Summit Carbon Solutions, they have approximately seventy percent of easements statewide. And according to another document by Summit Carbon, on March fourteenth. They hold one hundred and twenty-five of the two hundred and thirty-two required centerline easements for Wright County. That's fifty-four percent. And you guys already know Wright County has more centerline properties than any other county in Iowa in the Summit docket. Followed by Sue and Clay, which each one of those are about two hundred. What is special about the Snyder McClure team? Well, anybody with construction experience and an engineering license could do this work. You could, you could choose anybody. But I don't believe that you want just anybody doing this. I mean, this is a lot, a lot, a lot of property being affected in Wright County. We care. We're, we're here, we're not going anywhere. We live here. We care about our neighbors. You're our neighbors. Some of the things that we do that are. There's no, there's no fee for is monitoring the I U B filings and sharing all the information when it is filed. Landowner meetings. I've got a landowner meeting this week. Um if anybody's interested, there is an attorney, John Murray. From Storm Lake, who is holding landowner meetings. This one's gonna be in Pocahontas. And he's given some, some pretty good legal advice during these meetings, you know, to the landowners. And then I provided, I've got a handout that I put together with the Hancock County engineer. We sat down, Jeremy Purvis and I sat down together and put together a document that's just general information about easements, not legal advice, just. Things to look out for, things to, to ask about. Do's and don'ts kind of thing. And of course, the number one is hire a lawyer before you sign an easement, get a lawyer to look at it. And we have, have absolutely no affiliation with any C O two pipeline company and not at all affiliated. And some frequently asked questions, invoicing and payment. So we would invoice the county monthly. McClure invoices us and then we invoice you guys, then you in turn submit it to the pipeline. Um Summit Carbon has in their agricultural restoration plan, and you have a copy of that in your folders. Said that in thirty days, they would pay the invoice, then when you receive it, then you just submit it to us. Right? So we're extending our, our time there to forty-five days because we think it's probably gonna take that. Inspections during the construction period. So when construction commences, we'll have people on the ground. At all times that the pipeline's working. We think they're gonna work twenty-four seven. And we're preparing for that. If they don't, and they only work fourteen hour days, then we'll have guys there for fourteen hours a day. You know, who'd be there. McClure will be there the same way with the drainage dip, drainage districts and district tile.
The, uh one of my concerns since we're at one of those. Um well, the reason that we've got the most spots is because it's coming in from the south and from the east of county and exiting to the north. But. Yeah, I'm, I'm anticipating that possibly we would have more than one construction crew. Working within our county. You'd be prepared to have.
Absolutely.
The number of inspectors we would need to.
Absolutely. We're planning on two inspectors. They, they, they divide up their work sections into spreads. And we're planning on two inspectors per spread. Um and then McClure will have one or two guys as well. And if we need more, I can send her. I've got resources to do that. Any, any other questions?
Well, those of us are gonna get eminent domain, what you do is pretty darn important.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, for sure.
Because we don't, we aren't gonna have a section C or whatever.
Right, you don't have any separate agreement. There won't be any, no agreements, then, then we have to file back on the law and rules. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you for coming. Wondered if uh Carl sent the information that you had. He is not uh present today and isn't on the Zoom. I may. I would like to hear his comments on this. I think that I'd like to table the decision or, or the action. Portion of this until next Monday when he's, I think he's back.
Yeah, I think he is back next Monday.
Yeah. Um so, but, but I, I anticipate within the next week, we will take action on this. And I don't know if there's a letter of engagement that we need to do or.
Yes, sir.
We have that in front of you.
Okay. That notice of designation.
Oh yeah, you bet. And then will you file this with I U B or we do?
I'll file it. I'll file it with the I U B and then I'll get a stamped copy back from them and favorite a copy to you guys, a stamped official.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You guys have a couple of questions, don't hesitate. You've got my, my card.
Okay.
Nice seeing you again, Dan.
You'll be here.
Been a while.
Sounds like uh we've been looking at a farm processor pretty quick too once the snow gets out.
Yeah, it'd be good to get going on that.
Not yet. Well, a few months ago, but we'll get them once the snow is down. I figured I'd. I'm not checking because I don't want to get a call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so uh are you good with that, Rick? Pushing that until Carl's here and we can have discussion and uh but. So we will not take any action on item eight. Uh again, we will have that on the, I'd like to have that on the agenda. For next Monday to take action on hiring Snyder and Associates um as our inspector. Okay. Any meetings last week?
Yes, I had uh Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. Hopefully they have our new building up and running within the next month. And we are going after them for uh. Not damages, but because they're supposed to have been done months ago. Which really isn't very much. We should have made it more than it is. Other than that, everything's going fine. And I've got U D M O. Tomorrow night. Trying to think of what else I have.
That uh they're being behind schedule, what, do you think that'll go to mediation or do you think that they will? Just pay what you guys have requested?
I would think they're just gonna be paying all your costs because they are behind.
I had the. The Iowa Drainage District Association meeting in Rockwell City. They were told at the Twin Lakes Bible Camp. Um at a new facility they have there. They moved it from the Rockwell City Courthouse to that facility just to kind of showcase that. And. Uh I guess that'll be the only meeting that I had last. Oh yes, Midas on Wednesday, excuse me. That was that same day. Okay, sixteen hundred minus, yes, in four dot. That's right. But nothing earth shattering from either one of them.
Any legislation going on with the I D D A?
They are not registered. I asked that question, why they weren't registered. In support of. House File six, five sixty-five, uh which was the eminent. One. And they felt that with the resolutions that, that they didn't need to be. I shared my opinion that I thought they did need to be. I, I asked a couple of other counties about uh the resolutions if they had. In their changes to the template that was provided by Doug Strike, who's the legal counsel for. The Iowa Drainage District Association. Um if anybody else had put in there a clause stating that. Permits would not be issued to enter drainage districts or to cross drainage districts. Unless they have, unless the permit has been issued by the Iowa Utility Board. And none had. I'm meeting today with Dave Johnson, who's our drainage attorney. Um and that is one of the items that we've included in our resolution is that. We will issue a permit until they have, until the I U B has issued a permit. So. Oh, we have a ten o'clock. A timed event at ten o'clock with Gardner and Company to give an update on the. Uh an annual financial report. That's our audit per. Um so we will stand in recess until. Ten, or excuse me, until nine uh fifty-eight.
Leach weather's nice, sir. Oh yeah. Did Ainge get a bunch too?
Yeah, I live in Osage and we, we didn't get, we didn't make it even.
That hit on started on uh twentieth. The county went to Ankeny and he said it was not good.
I knew that my son, uh is on the Woodbridge Play Target team and they were down in San Antonio this afternoon for nationals. And they were supposed to fly back uh last night. And I know, he was calling and he's like, is the weather okay up there? And I'm like. He said that they were worried of the plates and everything. By the time they had hit in until late last night, so it was. They, they were ready to come home. Third individually for the trap speed and sporting play. But we, we didn't get to go, so I was.
A bad time of year.
Okay, it's ten o'clock. Uh we'll be back in session. Uh item number ten on the agenda is Elizabeth. Fire?
Fire, yeah.
Fire with Gardner and Company to give an update on Wright County's annual financial report.
Okay, well, good morning. We're gonna talk about uh the fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-two. We had lots of changes, lots of things that look different on our side, probably don't look a whole lot different on your side. But a lot of different things that we had to do a little bit differently. Uh we had to implement a new governmental accounting standards for statement this year. Uh my firm was required to implement a bunch of new um. New procedures with the implementation of the auditing standard number one thirty-four. And so we had a lot of independence things that we had to document. Uh we also had to have discussions about going concern. Um and looking at the sound balances to make sure that, you know, the county's still gonna be able to do business here in the next year. Um also, the audit reports are gonna look a little bit differently. Um the verbiage has changed. They've added some verbiage um to accounting. Side of things. Um so I guess we'll just start, we'll go through the book and then if you have any questions, we're gonna address those as we go. So the first place we'll stop is on page two is independent auditor report, Sun Gardner and Company letterhead. Um and the first thing you'll see is the opinion on the financial statements. And the purpose of an audit is to apply on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. Purpose of an audit has nothing to do with finding fraud or finding errors or irregularities. The audit is designed to apply on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. And for the fiscal year end of June thirty of twenty twenty-two, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the Wright County financial statement, which is what you wanna hear. Means it's a clean opinion. Uh there were some adjustments that we found during the course of the audit. All of those adjustments were made and included in these financial statements. Um one of those adjustments was the opioid settlement amounts. Um those amounts became available to us December twentieth, so of twenty twenty-two. So they weren't even available to the county at the time. Um the state audit office did go ahead and prescribe um the, the footnote that they wanted included. Uh they wanted those amounts to be put on the, the county's financial statements. And then also we amended the gap report. That's filed with the Department of Management to go ahead and refund those opioid amounts as well. So. Again, this auditor report again just talks about the opinion. Uh it does talk about how we did implement uh Gatsby statement number eight seven for the leases. Uh Wright County has a policy in place where the threshold for recording those leases is fifty thousand dollars. So with that. Um there weren't any leases that were required to be reported. We didn't have to do any financial statement restatement. However, the county does have some leases where there were less or, so those are included in a footnote disclosure.
And so is that something that we need to change our policy and reduce it? Okay.
No, no. Um you know, fifty thousand dollars is kind of, um the first county that we did. Uh the implementation for was Sarah Gordo and uh we actually submit that report to the Government Finance Officers Association every year. Um for an award of excellence. And so um they have a staff member there that is on that G F O A. And there's a lot of discussion about where we should set those thresholds. And ultimately it came down to. You know, is the, is a citizen's opinion or a financial statement's user's opinion gonna be changed on the financial statements? You know, if you buy the lease a car, if you lease a coffee machine or if you lease a postage, is that really gonna? And so they just determined that, you know, they felt fifty thousand was an appropriate level um to go ahead and, and set for that policy moving forward. Okay, so then starting on page six, we have the management suspension analysis. Uh the pages that follow that are just some highlights and some comparative financial statement information. It gives the county a chance to talk about what happened with the budget during that fiscal year. It also gives the county to talk about, a chance to talk about the economic factors that were considered when you were looking at fiscal twenty twenty-three's budget. And that kind of plays into our, you know, going concern, you know. And that kind of plays into our, you know, going concern, you know. Things are looking good or not, so. Um, the actual financial statement says we're on point fourteen. And just a reminder, there are three sets of financial statements, we have the full accrual financial statements. Um, that include all the capital assets and the debt. Uh, they're similar to what you would see in the private sector. We have the modified accrual financial statements, uh, which mirror the gap report that is required to be submitted to the Department of Management. And then because the county budget's on the cash basis, we do not budget the actual cash, cash basis comparison too, so. Those are the explanations of the three different sets of financial statements that we have. So exhibit A and B, the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Those are the full accrual financial statements, so those include all of the capital assets and related debt. Um, everything was listed all out there, it would have been a mirror what you see in a private sector. Um, you do have your governmental activities and your business type activities, which those, that business type activities is your agribusiness part. So, that was new last year, it's continuing to develop, you know, for the fiscal year that we're presenting here. Um, and so again, we have the statement of net position. And then your statement of activities on page sixteen. Ultimately, the county saw a positive change in net position. Of a little over three million dollars for the governmental activities and a little over two million for the business type. Um, and the increase in the business type is due with the transfer of the assets. Uh, the governmental activities funds are the ones that are paying for those assets, uh, through your academic development and your TIF and all of that. Well, then ultimately those assets are transferred over to that business type, so then when they start actually. Um, you know, doing the business end of it with the enterprise where they're more. Service driven, so that's what that transfer is, it's moving the assets from the governmental over to the business side, so. Um. Any questions or anything so far on all of that? Okay, so then the modified accrual financial statements are on exhibit C and exhibit E. And again, this mirrors the gap report that Betty submits to the Department of Management. And then exhibit D and exhibit X. Go ahead and they step you through the reconciliation of how you get from the modified accrual up to the full accrual, it shows all of the adjustments. Then if you start on page twenty-six, we have the statement of net position, statement of changes and a path goes for the proprietary fund, so again. We're showing enterprise agribusiness park as an enterprise fund and then we have your health insurance as the internal service fund, so. That goes ahead and presents those financial statements for those funds. And then exhibit J and K are the custodial funds, so that is gonna be your schools, your townships, your assessor, nine-one-one, emergency management. All of those funds where the county is the fiduciary agent, so, um, the voucher, the, the statement of net position gives you a snapshot of everything was had on three thirtieth. And then, um, exhibit K shows you the, the activity that happened during those funds during the fiscal year. So then, starting on page thirty-one, we start the notes to the financial statements. I am going to skip through the majority of these, it just goes ahead and gives you a summary of the significant accounting products and processes here, there's a lot of definitions. Um, including, um, accounting terminology. Uh, there are several pages of amortization schedules for the debt. We can go ahead and, and take a look at that. Um, with the pension, uh, I've heard it had a really, really good year, the year that we're reporting on and so. Um, there are several pages of actuarial information that they give us, uh, when it comes to IFRS. Something also different this year, normally IFRS represents a net pension liability for the county, so it looks at, okay, if I first spend, fund all of the benefits. What are the county's portion be? Well, for this particular fiscal year, IFRS had a really good year and so there's a net pension onset instead. So where, um, IFRS was over, actually overfunded for this year, so that looked a little bit different. There's the actuarial information included in the notes for all of that. Um, same with the other post-compliment benefits, lots of actuarial information. Um, on page sixty-three. We didn't talk briefly about the accounting change, um, like I said, it didn't have an impact this year because you didn't have any leases that meant a recording threshold, so we didn't have to restate any beginning. Information there, also we have a statement on the opioid litigation settlement and the state auditor's office provided us with that verbiage that they wanted included because. The county will be receiving those payments for about seventeen years.
Right.
So. And that is specific on what it can be spent on and Betty's got that all set up and ready to go, so. We do have a blurb in there about COVID nineteen on page sixty-four just because that continues to. Impact our lives a little bit, so hopefully that one will go away for next year, so. Page sixty-five then is our budgetary comparison schedule, uh, because the county budget's on a cash basis of accounting, we are required to include this. This. Seats and dispersments cash basis for the governmental funds. Uh, the column that's entitled less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage, because you don't have to budget for that and that gets us to our net. And then we also present the original budget and then the final amended budget amounts for the fiscal year. And then we also present the variances and we go through the variances as part of our analytical analysis at the end of the audit and. All of those variances could be explained, there weren't any red flags, there wasn't anything that, that, you know, drew our attention or caused any concern, so. And then the pages following that are some additional required supplementary information, uh, regarding the budget and also regarding, uh, the IFRS. There's some information for the last eight years of the proportionate share, um, ten years of contributions for IFRS.
Do you have a reason for that, all of a sudden jumping from, looks like it's been pretty steady in the eighty percentile? Funding and all of a sudden it's at a hundred percent?
IFRS had a really good year and they had.
On their investments.
Turn on their investments, yep, yep, that's the explanation that they, that they gave us for that. Um. So that. Got an eye.
Oh, it's encouraging.
It is, it is, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of scared to see what it. When we get the, the information for next year, I'm kind of concerned with that, and so. Uh, on page seventy-four then, we have some supplementary information, uh, it shows all of the smaller funds for the county that are aggregated and presented as non-major in the front of the book. This kind of goes ahead and gives the detail of those funds. Uh, schedules one and two, we have the non-major governmentals and schedules three and four show those custodial funds, so your schools, your assessor, um, townships, et cetera. And then schedule five on page eighty-two and eighty-three is a ten-year comparison for your resignation, your expenditures for the governmental fund, we can kind of look back and see the trends and. And what's been going on there. Page eighty-four gives us Gardner and Company letterhead again. Uh, this is the independent auditors report on internal control of our financial reporting and on compliance. And in addition to applying on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we also do some code of Iowa compliance testing and we also do some internal control testing, so. We talked with the department heads and elected officials about the internal controls they have in their, in place in their offices. Um, this, the state auditor's office provides us with a code compliance guide every year. Uh, there's certain code compliance things that they have us check every year, there's some that they have us check every other, every three, you know, some on a rotating basis. And then we go ahead and report our findings based on the test work. And again, we don't look at every single transaction that might have had an impact on these findings. Um, you know, we just go ahead and report based on our testing, so that leads us then into the findings for this year. And those start on page eighty-six, the first one is segregation of duties, which you're always gonna have, just because it's a small local government and. You're not able to entirely segregate the record keeping with the custody of the cash, um, so we do have a, a finding on that. The next one is preparation of full disclosure financial statements. And again, this is a ninety-eight percent of the reports that we issue and it's because you don't have a CPA on staff that does all of your external reporting. But we help you with that, so therefore we have to disclose that. Page eighty-seven, there is a financial reporting finding, uh, this, uh, goes back to that opioid settlement amount that again wasn't necessarily made available. And also we had accrued wages that were calculated but for some reason did not get posted to the accounts payable, so. That's never happened here before, so I don't know if it was just a glitch or, I'm not sure what happened there, but we did go ahead and make sure that those all got posted and it should be good going forward, so.
Uh, Deb and I, I, Deb and I sat down and talked about it and, and she went through her notes, she was. I don't know.
I think it's just a fluke, because like I said, I was looking back through work papers and, yeah, had that happen, so. It'll, it's all good. Um, on page eighty-eight then, we start the, the statutory reporting. Um, during the year for the budget, uh, there were dis- dispersments in certain departments that exceeded the amounts appropriated, so. When the budget amendments happened, those amounts were, you know, gone ahead and awarded additional appropriation, so everything was okay at the end of the year, it was just. A matter of, you know, getting the expenditure before that appropriation.
Right.
Um, the second one is a questionable expenditure. Um, and this is something that, um, state auditor Stan has us looking pretty heavily on. Making sure that there's public purpose documented for all of the expenditures. Um, and for this one, there was a visa charge for a meal expense that was a hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which. By the auditor, state auditor's guidelines is excessive, so therefore it's reported in this. And what's binding? On page eighty-nine, we have business transactions that are listed, uh, the code of Iowa identifies six thousand dollars as the threshold for a potential conflict of interest. We do have the one listed that is over the six thousand dollars, but because the proper procedures were followed to go ahead and, and initiate those services. This just becomes a transparency disclosure, there's no finding with it, everything is okay, we're just being transparent and disclosing that there was a related party transaction. Uh, with the board minute finding then, on the bottom of page eighty-nine, uh, we had two closed sessions. Um. That didn't have everything in the minutes documented that needed to be, and again, that's been a hot topic in a lot of our training, is making sure. You know, that is probably happening with the roll call votes and, and having all of that happen, it's just a matter of making sure that it's documented in the minutes. And that it does say roll call vote and has everything all listed out as prescribed in the code, so. Also, we had.
So, if you'll back up to that, uh, so I'm, uh, certain, are you, are you saying that? Uh. A vote. Of the board of supervisors coming out of closed session requires a roll call vote.
Go into closed session.
Go into closed session, requires a roll call vote.
It does.
Okay.
It does, and it just, it has to be documented that way in the minutes that it was done by roll call vote or what the vote was, so. Yeah. And then also we had, uh, one meeting that was test, selected for testing that the minutes weren't published in accordance with the code either, so. Uh, you know, just making sure that those, they're made available right away. Um, we have had problems with newspapers for several of our clients, um, this last year where. The client is getting the information to the newspaper, but the newspaper is not always pushing timely. And so we encourage everybody to keep your email log, so that way you can prove we made it available and it's on the paper for not.
Okay.
And, you know, as long as you've made it available to the paper for publication, that fits the requirements and, you know, you have gone ahead and fulfilled everything you need to do, it's on the paper for not having it published, so.
Right.
Uh, but that has been something that's been, like I said, troublesome and, and more clients this year where the papers are trying to drop the ball on things.
Good.
Um, on page ninety, uh, there's a, a comment about the deposits and investments. Um, the depository investment or the depository resolution, one of them did not include Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, so. There just needs to be a new depository resolution, uh, passed and approved then, that includes all the depositories, so that just needs to be added. Um, and then also at the bottom, we have a financial position finding. And. This is the same finding from last year, we added some explanatory language to it, uh, because the county entered into an interfund loan. The fund is in the process of paying that loan back, and so that shows as a liability for one of the funds, which causes it to have a deficit fund balance. So, that's the cause of that deficit fund balance, as soon as the interfund loan gets repaid, that's gonna go away, so.
And then we'll stock them in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. And then on the last page, page ninety-one, we do have a finding about the nine-one-one service board budget. Um, the notice for the public hearing for that budget was not published in accordance with the code, so we have a finding about that. They have the same budget requirements like what Betty does for the county budget, making sure those public hearing notices are published, not more than four. Not less than four and more than twenty, or.
That's right.
Making sure that those. Get published as required. The other thing that I wanna talk about a little bit too is because the county started spending the ARPA money. This year, they have some new rules about the single audit and whether or not you have to have one, well, a single audit threshold is if you spend. More than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars during the fiscal year of federal money. So if the county spends over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal money, you're required to have a single audit, which is a long, huge drawn-out process with additional filings and everything. Well, with the ARPA expenditures this year, they had changed the rules a little bit with that and they realized that a lot of, uh, entities that would not normally have to have that single audit. Are gonna have to have that because they are spending all of this ARPA money, so they changed the rules and the parameters so that if a county, um, receives less than ten million, which you didn't.
Right.
And you're using it for any, you know, local governmental as, as this revenue replacement for you. Instead of having to do the single audit, you are able to do an alternate compliance engagement agreement. And so you, of course, spent seven hundred fifty-three thousand dollars of your ARPA money during fiscal twenty-two, so you would have had to do a single audit. But because it is just the ARPA money that triggered that, we are able to do the alternate compliance examination and get turned instead. So, what that entailed was we had to do some test work on what you spent your money on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we had to go ahead and do a little bit of internal control with that, not a lot, just, you know, making sure that it's going through the claims process, that those, those expenditures are being approved. Uh, the big part of that is we also have to do a filing with the federal clearinghouse, which we're gonna be doing that after this meeting. Um, where we have to go ahead and we have to file a report with the federal clearinghouse, we have to fill out a data collection form, so that way. Your information is out there then on the federal clearinghouse website, so anybody can go ahead and access that. Uh, it'll just show the total dollar amount of expenditures and that you did not have any findings, uh, related to that, so. And then we also have to upload a report that, that goes with that, so.
So, uh, our funds are supposed to be spent by twenty twenty-six, does that ruling?
Yes.
Go away at, at the end of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, it is just specific for those.
For the ARPA funds.
And it's just reflecting that there are a lot of entities that don't, don't normally require a single audit and like. Pretty much another extra week plus worth of work, plus you have all the additional filings with the federal clearinghouse. Uh, and we just recognize that there's a lot of smaller entities that are gonna be spending over that seven hundred fifty thousand because they did get that significant amount of ARPA. And so they're trying to, and alleviate the pain.
Yeah.
With that, so. So we did go ahead and perform those procedures and we'll be finishing that up today.
Yeah, great. Any questions? Oh. Betty, any questions? Yep, concerning your office? Amanda? All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Hey, that, uh. Strikes. Everything on the agenda?
Anything else?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.